Call today's session to order. I would ask if everyone at this time would take a moment of silent contemplation for prayer and reflection. Certainly keep all of our men and women in our armed forces and those in public safety in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, good morning. We do have a public hearing today, and I would ask if anyone is here for that, make sure that you signed in in the back of the room. Positively, Carol, my colleagues have anything this morning?
I just had one thing I want to address for next Wednesday. The Ark of Carroll County raised over $3 million for their expansion, and they're having their opening, grand reopening, I think, on Wednesday. And I just want to congratulate them on finding the funds and the ability to put that together.
I had to say, I was, this past Saturday, I was working with Habitat for Humanity at a house in Westminster. It was great to see, there was about a dozen or so community people there working alongside the potential of the new homeowner for the house. It was just a great community activity. Rained a little bit, but we got the deck down before it rained, so the rest of the work was done inside, so it worked out pretty well. No one got injured, which was another plus. So it was really good for the community. It's nice to see people come together to help other people out. Also, this past, can't remember what day I went, but anyway, it was 10th anniversary of the community center for the city of Westminster. They've been at the building for 10 years. Now, the Boys and Girls Club has kind of outgrown that center, and they're going to be moving to a new location on Main Street. But the community center will stay there and be used for other activities for the community. So there's two very positive things that happened this past week.
That's it? Anybody else? I had the opportunity to attend New Windsor Fire Company's dedication of two new pieces of equipment, $700,000 worth of equipment that they put in service over there. A new engine, and a new rescue fire engine, and a new utility vehicle that they use on medical calls. Kudos to that company. They doing a tremendous amount of work over there with fundraising, and it put them in the position that they were able to purchase these two pieces of equipment with very little debt. So I say kudos to those folks over there for everything that they're accomplishing. Remind folks, as I always do, that our volunteer fire companies, all 14 of them are volunteer. Certainly be looking at their agendas and support them in any way that you can, as we come into the fall of the year, there's a lot of activities surrounding those 14 companies. Anything else? If not, first item on the agenda, request approval to accept a grant award for GOCAP, the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. And Debbie, our grants manager, Debbie Standiford. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. We were awarded funds for the law enforcement training scholarship program for the state's attorney's office through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. We were here before you, maybe a month ago, to ask permission to submit this application. And we were awarded $2,581 to cover the costs for state's attorney staff to attend. So we're here for you to accept the award. If you have any questions, I have John Carhart here with me from the state's attorney's office to answer any questions that you may have about the training.
John, just give us an update again where the training is and what it includes for the folks that are possibly watching and want to know.
Okay. The training is in New Mexico. And the training includes, it's a training in forensic investigations. And as we all know, in law enforcement and prosecuting crimes in the county and nationwide, forensics has become a big part of it. And this will enable the investigators that attend to better conduct those investigations, and not only in their conduct of the investigations, but understanding the reports and the forensic reports and things of that nature that they would be getting from the police department and the crime labs around the state.
Very good. I've been to that facility and taken some of that training out there. It is incredible. And in today's world, probably ought to get it weekly.
Yes.
So, but there's some great educational opportunities at that program in New Mexico. Any other questions?
I make a motion that we accept the law enforcement training scholarship program grant award.
Second.
Okay. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, request approval for acceptance of the FY17 Transportation Operating Awards. And we'll be joined by Jeff Topper, our Deputy Director, Public Works. We'll join Debbie. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, we're here to ask you to accept the 2017 Annual Transportation Plan, the operating portion of that. We have not received the capital documents yet. So this is just operations for fiscal '17. We were flat funded with our combination of FTA, MTA, operating funds at $604,574. We also did receive the additional funding of $185,417 to implement the enhancements to our transportation system. Of that $185,417, we are going to use a portion of that to support the evening Westminster service. So $31,900 is our estimate of what we'll use from the $185 to provide that service, that six-month trial service. And then, of course, Jeff can answer any specific questions that you might have.
What is the constraints that we have on the $185,000?
That's to be used for basically three different items. One would be a bidirectional route in Westminster. One would be a new route from Hampstead-Manchester to Westminster. And then finally is the evening pilot program. The bidirectional route and the new route would be contingent upon getting, you know, vehicles from our request that we've been approved in fiscal '14, '15, so on. So when those vehicles come in, then we can look at doing these other two things. So right now, the pilot program is the only thing that we can reasonably do with those monies.
Okay. And I know we've had lots of conversations, but to use any of that money, we have to provide additional match above and beyond the match that we're already providing. Is that right?
Yes, there was some additional match that was required. And right now, we're showing worst-case scenario there at 18.5. That's the maximum amount that was budgeted. But that's predicated on a very, you know, assumption of very low fees, fares coming in, which is the $3,600 that you're saying. If fares come in better than that, you know, and state monies, we possibly could use more there.
So our contribution is offset by the fares? Or no?
Yes, there's, they look total cost of the program, which is estimated to be for six months, $54,000. Then we reduce that by the fares, and the rest has to be covered by grants and by the county.
Okay. And that $31,900 is a predetermined amount, or it's a percentage?
That's a percentage.
Because it looks like a very high percentage relative to what we usually have to contribute to operating costs.
It is right now, yes.
So, why is that? You know, we usually, we usually provide like 25% or something like that, isn't it? Or is it?
It's something like 17.5%, I believe, something like that.
Okay.
And so you're right, it is a higher percentage. But again, we're showing worst case right now, so we will see how the program works out.
But that's what I'm saying, is the restriction from the $185 that we could only use $31,900?
No, as my understanding from talking with MTA is that we have the ability to use funds from the $185.
Right.
To the extent that we want. But the more that we use those funds, the more it would take away from the other two programs, the bidirectional route and the new route that we want to put in.
Okay. Debbie, you understand what I'm asking?
Well, and I think we, I think the other restriction is that, you know, there are three pots of money that we get, 5307, 5311, and then the S-STAT.
Okay.
So this would fall under 5307, if I'm right.
Okay.
The urban area. So the $185 was distributed among those three pots of funds. So we got a small increase in the 5307. So we're going to draw down that entire increase, and then we will, you know, be able to draw some of the state funds.
I mean, my only concern is because of the situation with the vehicles, as what happened last year, we ended up leaving operating money on the table. I just want to make sure we're not overcommitting the county side, but it looks like we're making a pretty high match, and there's going to be unused operating dollars from MTA. You see what I mean?
Yeah, I think we, and we made this, we estimated a little on the low side so that the county match would not come in higher. You know, we were, we tried to be conservative when we were working out these numbers. We will draw down as much state and federal dollars as we can to support this program.
Okay. And the other question is, and I know we've got, were some decisions made about some mini vans and things like that that just came into the situation, and I understand they're not the same configuration, and there are requirements there. But is it possible that adding those into the fleet with some juxtapositioning of how we're doing what we're doing would allow us to take a bus that would be suitable for either the bidirectional or the Hampstead-Manchester, or the Hampstead-Westminster route and use it so that we don't have to wait for that bus? You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying, sir. I don't think that's the case, though, because, again, you're taking a bus out of service and you're putting a couple of vans into service, and the vans just don't have the capacity that the bus is in, and that's what we need.
Yeah, I guess the thing is, if we take a van out, I think we have capacity of maybe four or five seats, but it also has wheelchair capacity. I just, you know, sometimes some of our routes are really full, sometimes they're not. I'm just wondering if there's not, and, you know, we don't have to decide that today, obviously, but if we could look at it and say, you know, maybe by saying, well, it would be two of those, and there may be some additional costs, but some of that additional cost may be borne by the operating dollars that are going to end up being left on the table, maybe we could try to get one of those two into play. Maybe we can't, I don't know, but...
Well, remember, sir, that the Promaster that you're referring to, that Promaster van, that's wheelchair-
No, I'm talking about the four we got from Katz.
Yes, and those are going to veteran service.
All four of them?
Yes, all four, veteran service. So we're talking about the three that are currently in veteran service that are going into paratransit. And only that one, is the Promaster, has a wheelchair accessibility, and that's already being used in the program quite extensively now.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the FY17 FTA/MTA Operating Awards for the Annual Transportation Plan.
And I'll second it. Any other comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm Steve.
Four to one, thank you.
Thank you.
You ask those questions?
Thank you.
Four oh one.
Four to oh to one.
Yeah, four oh to one. Get the right score, right? Next on the agenda, request approval for 2016-17 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant Award. Our Director of Public Safety, Scott Campbell, Emergency Management Coordinator, Doug Brown, join us at the front. Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. This morning, I have before you the 2016-2017 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. This grant is provided to increase our state and local effectiveness in safety and efficiently handling hazardous materials. Some of the typical things that we use this grant for, and what we propose to use it for this year, is the STTS Tank Truck Course Training for our all hazardous materials folks within Carroll County. We also send our volunteer folks to the International Hazardous Materials Response Team Conference. And then finally, it will be utilized to do a tabletop exercise for the concepts that they learn in the tank course training. Now, just a little bit of background, last year, the 2015-16 amount of money we received was $7,500. This year, when the project was put together in coordination with our Hazmat team, we requested $20,374. And though we didn't get that amount, I'm pleased to say we did receive a total project amount of $16,375, which will allow us to do those projects proposed. That being said, we are using an in-kind match of meeting space and training materials. So we typically have to use no hard funding for that. We are allowed to use in-kind funding to meet our match. That is what we have for you today in this one, and I'm certainly able to entertain any questions you might have.
Is this only paid personnel, or is this volunteer personnel?
Oh, no, sir, it's volunteer personnel. And primarily, those that are on our hazardous materials team here in the county are all volunteer, to include the core membership or management of the team.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions? I mean, just to comment on what you just said, Doug, I will reiterate that these folks that serve on our Hazmat team spend an incredible amount of time training and bringing that training back to the county, and participating in all kinds of instructional events. So you bring up a great point when you ask that question, because in a lot of jurisdictions, those folks are paid.
Yes, sir. And we bug them quite a bit, to be honest with you. We work with them throughout the year to not only make these plans, but to execute these plans. And they're fantastic at coming to the table and doing all the things that need to be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda, request approval for 1617 UASI, Department of Public Safety funding. And you gentlemen, stay where you're at. Good morning.
Good morning again. So just remember last time when we brought in a bit more than we asked for. This time about, we are talking about an allotment that we receive annually, which is the Urban Area Security Initiative funding. Just a brief description for our folks in the television world, we are part of the Baltimore Urban Area Security Initiative. Carroll County, along with Annapolis, Anarundel County, Hartford County, Hired County, Baltimore City, and Baltimore County make up those seven-member jurisdictions. As a member, we are eligible to receive these pass-through grant funds that are passed through the state of Maryland. We received notification that our fund allocation for this year will be $237,321. Now, compared to the FY15, that is a decrease of $81,413. And that's because there was, in general, decreased funding in our overall UASI. So a 46% decrease was seen, and that's because we, we as the Baltimore area region, dropped three percentage points when assessed by the federal government with regard to threat and vulnerability. And that is why that amount dropped. Now, I do have more specifics in what areas it dropped and what we may need to make up, and certainly I will put that out for you guys now for any questions that you may have.
So you're saying that federal level assessment was done?
Yes, sir.
They used a crystal ball and determined that we are now less likely to be attacked now relative to other jurisdictions than we were a year ago?
Right. So, and I was sure you guys would have some questions on that, so I brought just a bit more detailed information. So first off, the Department of Homeland Security, their definition of risk, which is important for us to understand, is the potential for an unwanted outcome resulting from an incident event or occurrence as determined by its likelihood and associated consequences. Big definition, but that's what they use as a guide. And then they assess what the threat is to the Baltimore area, what our vulnerabilities are, and then what the consequence is if we are attacked. Now, the risk methodology determines the relative risk of terrorism that we face, and it takes into account people, critical infrastructure, and economic security.
Just a question, did they ever use the word terrorism in that document, or could they not find it within their own hearts to use the word terrorism? Do they use terrorism in that document?
Within this, they did use potential risk of terrorism to people. Yes, sir.
All right.
And the threat analysis continues to account for any threats of domestic violence extremists as well. Now, what happened is, is-
What is a domestic violence extremist?
Well, those would be homegrown, is what they were saying. So anyone who is a homegrown person, who is going to mean to do acts of terror or other things within this region.
A homegrown person, you mean as a, I mean a native citizen as opposed to someone who's a non-citizen?
That would be my interpretation of it, yes, sir, a native citizen.
But they don't define it, what a homegrown terrorist is.
No, sir, they do not. The risk-
I hope the public understands that I am showing you, what we're seeing here, I think, is an example of political correctness that's beginning at the top, filtering its way down the, but we can't even talk candidly about threats to our country anymore.
Sure.
As we play these mealy-mouthed games with these bureaucratic terms.
Right.
Okay.
And certainly, I'm glad, which is exactly why. I knew you folks would have these questions, and we can go on. This process in 2015 and prior years basically had us at rank of 19, and that's 19 out of the top 100 jurisdictions in the United States of America.
19 for what? Is that good or bad?
19 is, the lower that you are, so for example, New York City is number one. They are the number-one Urban Area Security Initiative that receives the largest amount of money. And we ranked 19th.
So we're part of the Baltimore metropolitan-
Baltimore region ranks 19th.
Baltimore region is 19th out of 100.
Yes, sir.
So what they really did was rank the Baltimore region down.
Yes, sir.
They didn't rank us down relative to, for example, another jurisdiction in Maryland.
No, sir. No, sir. It's just the region relative to other urban area security regions. And we ranked, we dropped from 19 in 2015 to number 22. So we only lost three spaces, but those three spaces accounted for 46% of our funding. And I will tell you that myself and the other six members of the Urban Area Security Initiative Executive Board, we haven't just let this fall on deaf ears. We certainly work every day to, again, justify, because every year, we're evaluated. And we believe that there are additional threats that certainly should be accounted for, and we're working to get those accounted for this year. But I certainly can't tell you exactly, you know, what will happen as they evaluate us. They come in and they do each jurisdiction on a number of factors, and at that point, they turn out the list once a year, and we really don't have any play in it at that point.
Could one of the reasons that we dropped be the fact that we're more prepared for emergencies than we were before?
Absolutely, that could be one.
So it could be that we're doing a better job, therefore, we drop down the list.
It certainly could be one, yes, sir.
Which costs us money, but still, we're doing a better job.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I did have, I can tell you specifically, because that obviously is a question that I had, so I just want to give you some numbers so that you understand what the real is and still the 46%, and what that means to Carroll County. So what that means is, you just heard me talk a little bit earlier with regard to hazardous materials. Now, hazardous materials and the preparation for that is funded by this UASI grant, which means it pays for meters, equipment, testing of meters, and those types of things. And in that category, we dropped from $35,714 in '15 to $28,571 in '16. Our emergency notification system, commonly referred to as reverse 911, dropped from $40,720 funding to $20,000 funding in '16. Our incident management team, which is a poor label, but it is the federally required label, is actually what refers to as our Web EOC. That went from $10,800 to zero. Now, that does have a good caveat in that the state has actually taken that over, and we are partnering with them. We are one of the first two jurisdictions that will do that, so we have taken care of that with no additional cost to us. And then finally, one of our most important threats and what these grants are about, our law enforcement funding, went from $75,000 to $40,500. And then finally, our command post that you see around at many of the incident scenes, whether it's law enforcement, or we need them for mobile communications, was cut in half from $16,500 to $8,250. So those are the real numbers. That is where the 46% cuts went. And I will tell you that we have worked within our other UASI funding, for example. Kendall Lindenberg, our financial person in the office, has found another area that we can fund the emergency notification system within the UASI funds. It's been approved, we'll be doing that this year. But these will be things that we need to consider for out years as we work, and certainly I'm working with Director Campbell to make sure those are included in things that you all look at. And then we'll obviously need your support as we move forward.
So Doug, is there any immediate need to, I know you said there's some offsets to look at the net differential and possibly supplement that to make sure that everything's at the level it should be?
So our highest priority, so short answer is no, not at this point. Our highest priority was the emergency notification system. We just received in our office two days ago the fact that they approved us to utilize another area of the FY16 budget to offset that cost, where we had had some cost savings. So that took care of $20,720 that we otherwise would have needed.
Okay, some of it you picked up with the state doing something different with the-
Some of it we picked up differently in that. We have also, we picked up the Web EOC, which took care of the $10,800. And obviously, with whatever needs the sheriff may have, I would certainly say that coming in with his next budget year, not speaking for him, but obviously, that will be, you know, $30,500 roughly, give or take, that normally would have been utilized out of this grant to fund those things for the specialty teams that he has, that certainly he will not have.
But you feel like that's more going forward in the future than-
That will be-
Than an immediate shortfall we have to address?
Correct. That's definitely moving forward in the future.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
So if we get better and better, we get less and less.
We do. You know, that certainly is it, that we get better. And we also have to account for the fact that while this is certainly not acknowledged in any formal fashion, I will tell you that if we look around the country, there are areas that regrettably, and no one wants to be in that place, experience acts of terrorism. And then the federal government, that pot doesn't increase. So they will look at that area and say, well, okay, we need to now invest some money in this area, and therefore, it shrinks the pot of money available to the other areas, and those are the types of things that happen.
Well, I am impressed with the way public safety is ahead of the curve on a lot of this, and you guys keep improving as we go into this. And I'm sorry the federal government doesn't reward it that way. Actually, you should be receiving more because you're doing more, but I understand this, and thank you for being ahead of the curve.
Well, no, thank you. We have a proactive group of Commissioners, I'll be quite honest with you upfront. You guys all step out in front and help us out, that's the only way we get anything done. Let's face it. It's without you guys, we're not doing anything, and the citizens need to know that, that they're first in your thoughts, and that relays down to us, and we're able to get our jobs done. So we appreciate it.
Well, hearing that, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the FY16 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Award.
Only because of that?
Well, it's one of the main reasons.
One second. Okay. Motion and second. I had the wonderful opportunity to sit in on a lot of those UASI meetings. And I'll echo Commissioner Weaver. Kudos for any, any way in which you're able to make these numbers work. Been there, done that, and you do a good job at that. It's quite the challenge.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. All right. Next on our agenda, it's a public hearing, proposed zoning text amendment, reference to solar surface area requirements in residential districts. And our Director of Land and Resource Management, Tom Devilbiss, and of course Brenda is here too, our special projects coordinator. So at this time, Mr. Burke, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of today's public hearing is to elicit public comment on a proposed amendment to our zoning code concerning solar energy conversion facilities. And the Director, Tom Devilbiss, is here to give you an update or a heads-up as to what's being proposed. And we have some comment cards later, so there will be some public comment.
Very good. Yes, Commissioners, we're here today to request or to hold a public hearing on Chapter 158, the zoning amendments to that chapter. As you will recall, this item was assigned to the Environmental Advisor- As you will recall, this, this item was assigned to the Environmental Advisory Council as part of their 2016 work plan by the Board of Commissioners, and the specific request was to look into revisions to the zoning code related to the size of solar panels on residentially zoned districts, within the residentially zoned districts. The EAC investigated and discussed the issue at their regularly scheduled meetings between December and April of 2016. They presented the findings and recommendations to the Board on May sixteenth, and received direction from the Board to proceed to the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission for their review. The EAC presented and discussed its recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission at two meetings on June twenty-ninth and August third of this year, and Planning and Zoning Commission voted to support the EAC's recommendations. Staff then returned to the Board of Commissioners on September fifteenth with the proposed recommendations as code amendments, and the Board did give staff permission to proceed to the public hearing, which we are there today. Briefly, just to remind the Board and those folks watching, what the charge was to look at increases in the ground-mounted system square footage based on lot size, so we wanted to look at how that relates to different-sized lots, as to what the requirement is for the square footage allowed. And keep in mind, the current code has one set, one hundred and twenty square foot requirement in it. We also proposed to look at glare mitigation and some assurances from the installers that glare was not going to be an issue with either public right-of-ways or adjoining properties. And the final item that was proposed was a solar access easement notice, basically that the county requested that those who are going to install, contact their neighbors, and if they want to have assurances that their neighbors are not going to black, block their access to the solar energy, that they come up with some type of easement agreement with those neighbors in order for that to, to take place. The county would not be responsible for assuring that neighbors would not block that access. The person responsible is that, those persons who are installing, all right, to work that out with their neighbors. We did receive one public comment via email, and that email went to Mr. Voight, our zoning administrator, and I would like to go ahead and read that to you, if that's appropriate here, and then I'll provide you with a copy of it. And this came from Mr. Tom Lamprouse. He's a solar engineer with Solar Energy World LLC, and they are based in Elk Ridge, Maryland. Dear Mr. Voight, I'm writing today with comments regarding the size of residential ground-mounted solar arrays in Carroll County. Thank you for your willingness to carry these comments to the Board of Commissioners. Homeowners who are concerned about the environment, want to improve the equity of their home, and are interested in saving money on their electric bills, are turning to solar energy for fulfillment. Often, this equates to installing a solar system on their home. However, this isn't always feasible for homeowners who consume more energy, or more electricity, excuse me, than can be produced on their roof. As a result, they often install ground-mounted solar electric systems to meet all their needs. The present Carroll County restrictions specify a limit of one hundred and twenty square feet for these ground-mounted systems, large enough for approximately nine solar modules. This limits a homeowner's production cap, capacity to less than four thousand kilowatts, kilowatt-hours per year. I'm not an expert. The average home uses nearly eleven thousand kilowatt-hours per year, nearly three times the allowed maximum allowable size. State law allows homeowners to offset one hundred and ten percent of their usage with solar electric systems. Please recognize that even increasing the allowable size to four hundred and fifty square feet, three by one hundred and fifty square foot, that's in parentheses, is inadequate, as many homes in Carroll County exceed the average consumption above. We ask that the Commissioners give due consideration to holding a public meeting regarding a change to the size limitation on ground-mounted solar electric systems. We believe this maximum size, system size should be extended to sixteen hundred square feet in order to meet the needs of Carroll County homeowners, including larger homes. Best regards and thank you, Mr. Tom Lamprouse. So, we will have a copy of that for you all at the conclusion of this. That is the only direct correspondence we had with anybody from email or letter. I did receive a call from an individual, and I believe, seeing the card there, that that individual's here today, so I will let them convey to you their thoughts on this process.
Commissioner Wance, in addition to being publicized on the county's website, there was an advertisement that ran for today's hearing in the Carroll County Times on the twenty-second of December and the twenty-ninth of December. And we do have two public comment cards. The first is from Charlene Norris. Hi, Charlene. Could you approach that, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my first time doing this, so bear with me, folks. Hi, my name is Charlene Norris. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm a resident of Carroll County for twenty-four years, and approximately twenty years ago, my late husband and I purchased eighteen ninety-eight Pine Knob Road in Eldersburg, which is a parcel of land just under forty acres. Since that time, we have been very proudly stewards of the land. We have put a lot of the land into the forestry program. We maintain a pond area for wildlife. We have refuge areas for wildlife, so environmental issues are big with us. So, when we found that there was an opportunity to pursue solar, and this would be me, because as I mentioned, he passed away, I contacted three different solar companies, and the information that was presented in that letter is consistent with what I found. My property, because I raise horses, I have a small barn, I have an irrigation system for an orchard, I maintain fans in the summertime for the barn and heat in the wintertime, and my house is of substantial size, I utilize more than three times the averages that have been quoted of roughly a thousand to eleven hundred kilowatt-hours per month. I'm in the thirty-six thousand to forty-three thousand a year. And as mentioned in that letter, I don't have sufficient roof space, and even if I use my roof space and needed a ground-mount system, the existing modifications that you've proposed for greater than three-acre lots will not meet my needs. My request is that, from my point of view, it looks like the current laws that are being written, the zoning regulations, are concerned very much with residential, smaller residential lots. The table that's in that current documentation is oriented towards quarter-acre, half-acre, three-quarter acre, one acre, and over three acres. There's a significant difference between a property that is over three acres and that is thirty acres or fifty acres, or in the case of one of our neighbors, sixty-six acres. Our needs are significantly more, and we don't present the same aesthetic concerns. People can't even see our properties from the road. My driveway is nearly a half a mile long. I sit in the middle of the woods. So, I would respectfully ask that you consider amending the current language that's being proposed to include provisions for properties greater than ten or twenty acres that allows us to produce enough electricity to sufficiently power all of our needs. And also, I noticed that in the current language, there's a prohibition from having any variances. And while I understand that you have concerns, again, especially on the smaller residential properties, perhaps you might consider, since there are so many different variations and things to consider with different property owners, that you would consider variances for properties that are larger and are, have a large amount of undeveloped real estate on them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Karen Leatherwood.
Hi, so, I'm kind of here wearing two hats, so I'll put on my EAC hat and just say that, you know, when we were doing this and putting this together, we were very much focused on the smaller residential pieces of property, and went kind of following the agricultural, what is the existing agricultural rules for the larger pieces of property. Now, I'll take off my EAC hat and put on my Karen Leatherwood hat and say that the interesting thing in, you know, in the time that this has sort of been an open discussion, and I've been out and about talking to people and asking people what, to give me some feedback on this issue, I was, I, I have been surprised by the fact that no one has really expressed to me concern about the appearance. It has been an interest in making sure that there is a unit sufficient to deal with providing electricity to people. And also, I've talked to several Realtors, and they, their position has been that it hasn't really, that it could potentially be an issue in the future, but it hasn't really been an issue yet. So, there's no real sense of what the citizens want or need in terms of being able to sell their pieces of property and stuff like that. So, I think the feedback that I've gotten is that people are almost concerned that it's too small. So, that's sort of my two cents. And since I have a minute and thirty-five seconds, I'm just going to say one more thing, since I have my Karen Leatherwood hat on. You know, I was sitting here this morning, when I walked in, Commissioner Weaver, you said something about hazardous materials, and I thought, you know, we are so blessed, and, you know, politics is so ugly right now. I just need to say thank you to the five of you for putting the citizens of Carroll County first, and for sitting here representing finance, business, education, agriculture, public safety.
And wrestling.
I'm sorry, wrestling.
And wrestling.
Okay, so now, I'm going to go motorcyclists, you know, whatever. We are so blessed to have citizen legislators, and I'm so grateful. I see you guys out in the county all the time. I know that you get a lot of feedback from people. I know that it's good and bad, but we appreciate it.
Karen, the Commissioners wish to give you an extra ten minutes.
Thank you, right by my side.
Commissioner Frazier gave her some money, too.
So, I want to make a comment. I know it's a hearing, but I think, first off, Karen, thank you for your kind words, and I do appreciate it, and I'm sure that my fellow Commissioners do also. And I know that my fellow Commissioners are trying to do what they think is best. I think that the comments made by Ms. Norris have merit. It's no surprise that I have opposed this legislation. I think it's poorly, there's some details that need to be better tweaked before it moves forward. I'm very concerned about the setbacks there. I would consider supporting legislation to increase solar size on larger parcels of land, providing we also are more responsible in dealing with the setbacks on small residential lots. And, and I, and I would, I don't know what, this is just a hearing right now, but I think this Board of Commissioners should consider, should consider going through the process. We can go through the, the public hearing process for the next ten days, but I think this, this, this text language needs more work. I think it should be tabled for now. If it's reworked to provide more solar on larger parcels, but also greater setbacks on smaller parcels, I would be more inclined to support it.
I have a point of clarification. Larger parcels, agricultural parcels, can use larger arrays, correct?
No, it's tied to the square footage of the building, the roof areas of the buildings, the roof areas of the buildings.
Jay?
Currently, under the existing law, in the agricultural zoning district, you're allowed to use one and a half times the total roof space on your property in the agricultural zoning district. So, if you're a farm of forty acres, and in your agricultural zoning district, and say you have ten thousand square foot of roof space on your property, you could put fifteen thousand square foot of solar panels on the property, max, and that would include either one and a half for pulling around. So, for agricultural zoning properties, it is a larger-
Yeah, but let's, let's, Jay, let's, let's be more specific.
Hold on a minute. Are we past the, do we have to close the public hearing part of this, Tim, at this time, or are we still allowed to take the questions here?
You're still allowed to take questions.
Okay, I just want to make sure for-
Well, let me, let me be more specific, Jay. I, I agree with everything you said, but a better example would be if you had, if you had ten thousand square foot of roof space on a five-acre parcel, you could put fifteen thousand square feet in, but if you had ten thousand square feet on a fifty-acre parcel, it would still be the same.
Correct.
And my position is that I would, I say it again, that I would support larger areas on larger parcels, providing we increase the setbacks on the smaller areas, because I think that would be better public policy. I know you all want this to go through. I know I don't have the votes alone to stop it, but I think we can all make it better. And there's a chance to make this a unanimous vote by improving the setbacks, because right now, I would be inclined to impose this, because I believe that the five-foot setbacks are not good public policy in residential areas. And somehow, pay attention, Heather, I don't think that's gotten out there in the public domain, that we're talking about five-foot setbacks for these things. You could have, you could have arrays of one to two or three thousand square feet, five feet from property lines, and-
How could you have an array that big on a residential? It's, that would be impossible.
Excuse me?
It would be impossible to have an array that, that large. You can only have a-
No, three-acre lot. My, for example, using the current, the current proposal, my house has a roof area of approximately, I don't know, maybe four thousand square feet, so I would be allowed to, let's say three thousand square, I'd be allowed to put forty-five hundred square feet of arrays on my three-acre lot. Forty-five hundred square feet, that'd be an array ten feet high, four hundred and fifty feet long. I don't think that's good policy in a residential area on relatively small lot development. I think this Board can make this better. I'm not saying stop it, I'm not saying kill it, get the, get the, get the setbacks up, and then you can make provisions for larger arrays on larger acres like Ms. Norris's.
This was proposed more for the residential right now, correct? And then, we have-
It applies to the residential zone. The conservation zone is considered a residential zone, and that's why this issue that Ms. Norris brings up has, is highlighted.
If we could pay us this and realize it's too small, or we want to change it, we can come back and up that in the future, correct? Or change, make the changes?
Commissioner, you direct us to, we can change anything that you want.
That's, I mean, this process has taken nine a year to get from zero to where we
are. So, if we make this change and we realize we want to even research further, that could happen.
Of course could, sure.
Okay. Tim, if we, if we go through, I mean, I, I think there's a particularly good reason to look at some of the larger lot designations. I have much less of a, of a concern about the whole thing, really, but certainly on the, on the existing, what's being proposed, don't have problems with it. But if we were to add that distinction, or look at a level of, for that, do we have the mechanics in the, in this to do that, or do we have to, is that really a separate look that needs to be made?
I, I think the public has been put on adequate notice that you're considering changes to the solar energy conversion facilities, particularly with regard to solar surface area requirements. So, if your question is, do we need to have another public hearing to make that kind of change, I would say no.
Okay. And, and Tom, do we have a framework to say, you know, if something's above a certain size, you know, where we would, you know, what rationale we would use for that, or not really?
I, I don't think that was considered, Commissioner, I'll be very frank with you. I don't think, you know, looking above, because again, I think the main focus here was these properties have been developed for residential purposes.
Sure.
And certainly, you know, you can say a thirty-acre conservation zone piece with just one house on is a residential, but, you know, it is a large piece that you can do lots of other things on. You have the flexibility there. Where three acres and below, you really don't have the flexibility to put animals and do the types of things that you could above. So, I think the main focus was certainly on that purely residential lot, and not those larger ones.
So, how would you recommend addressing this concern? Would you want to take it back as a separate issue? Do you think it's something that we could work up some ideas on in the context of this consideration, or what?
Well, I would say there's two ways that I could see doing it. We could take it back and try to rework it and create some more groupings above three acres, say, if that, I'm not sure what we would base it on, but we certainly can take and look at that. The other, the other way to do it, as Ms. Norris indicated, is you could include, I think, a variance in, in properties maybe that are above, that under certain conditions, you know, where you're using it for certain purposes, that it can exceed, and maybe you stick a limit on the amount of variance that's allowed. So, I, I could see it happening both ways. You can go back and try to get more specific and come up with very specific criteria for other categories above the three, or we can allow some administrative flexibility there through a variance process, under maybe certain conditions, that, you know, if you're using it for things beyond that, and you have to show your energy demands, maybe that it could be done that way, too. That, again, keeping in mind that this was, the main focus was those smaller lots, and, and, you know.
No, I understand. So, we could put a variance in, into this language right now, that would say it was just an example, over ten-acre lot, you could put as many solar panels as you needed to supply electricity for your particular residence, or your particular farm, or whatever you want to-
I mean, I think you could do that, Commissioner, I don't interrupt you, but I think I would want it a little bit more specifically, that you have to show the need, you don't have to show what you're doing to say, I, you know, I want it for this purpose, and this, based on some engineering design and all, is what I require, and then, yes, I mean, you could, you could, you could do that. And then, you could put an upper limit to that also, if you, you know, if you felt more comfortable.
But a variance in that regard, though, does create some measure of subjectivity, too, though, doesn't it?
It always does, Commissioner.
Someone interpreting that to say, well, is that a satisfactory need? Is that really how much they need?
Well, that's why I think you would want to base it on some type of quantitative estimate from, you know, say, a solar company or from an engineer, somebody who would say, this is what that demand is going to be. You'd want to base it on that, and not just on, I need it because I think I need this much. That's what I would recommend, if that's, if you want to try to keep it narrowly focused on the variance side of it.
So, is there enough documentation where, and is there enough standard in the industry to say, if someone said, well, I can produce, you know, say, my last twelve, you know, to say, if someone said, well, I can produce, you know, say, my last 12, you know, electric bills, and simply do the math, and how many panels that would relate to, is it that cut and dry, or is it more, it really would require some measure of administrative flexibility?
You may have just stepped outside my expertise.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I'm not sure I can answer that. I mean, I think the capabilities there, the industry's there.
You can look at the power of consumption on the grid and determine exactly how many cells you need.
So I mean, to me, if it's a mathematical calculation...
It's a mathematical calculation.
I think where the, where, and at least from my little bit of understanding, where it comes a little bit more complicated is the fact that there are different types of solar panels you can get. So, you know, there's efficiencies in them. So to say that X number of square feet with certain efficiencies, that's where it can get a little more difficult, I do believe.
Tom, I want to ask you, I want, well, are you guys done with this line of questions before I change it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I want to, I want to ask you a question. You know, one of the things we talk about, and Ted Zaleski talked about it recently, is keeping Carroll Carroll. I want to talk about some philosophies and other sections of our zoning code, specifically commercial. If I, if a citizen has a piece of commercial land and want to develop just about anything on it, whether it's a gas station, whether it's a snowball stand, we have something that the Planning and Zoning Commission requires. It's called screening. Why do we put screening in in all of our commercial industrial zones? Why do we demand screening as part of the development review process, Tom? Or maybe Phil would rather ask that question, either of both of you, I don't care. Why do we have screening?
I'll answer it, since landscape falls under my purview.
Okay.
Mainly, mainly for aesthetic purposes, but also for...
Say again, aesthetic purposes.
Hold on.
Yep.
Noise abatement, it could be for lighting purposes, if there's lighting, you know, reflection or whatever. So there's, there's multitude of reasons why that landscaping is required, all of which are stated in the landscape code at the very beginning of it, under the purpose, it indicates those reasons for why landscaping has been required.
But primarily, it's aesthetics, and it becomes more critical, I've sat on Planning and Zoning Commission for five years, it becomes more critical when in a commercial area surrounded by residential areas, because the neighbors come out and they raise cane. And we try to mitigate the resistance from the community by putting in screening to reduce the aesthetic impact of putting something that's commercial or industrial looking adjacent to residential areas. So if I was developing a commercial lot and I wanted to put 4,500 square feet of solar cells on it right now, in a commercial zone, and I was adjacent to residential, wasn't it likely that the Planning and Zoning Commission would require screening?
That's very likely.
Yet, if we put it in a residential area, we would not require screening. This is insane, gentlemen. This is bad policy.
I agree, we should take the screening policy and do away with it. If you really want to talk about property rights and true value...
No, I'm not talking about property, I'm talking about keeping Carroll Carroll.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, your aesthetic, I mean, frankly, you know, maybe if you lived next door to me, you'd want screening so that I could go out in my bathing suit, because that wasn't aesthetically pleasing to you. I would understand that totally.
I would never look.
I would totally understand that, but the fact is, we shouldn't be legislating across boundary lines. Now, the real reason we do that, and the real reason zoning exists really, is to keep the peace, to get the community to function properly together, right? Because the fact is...
I agree with that.
Okay, so there's not a practical, you know, rights-driven process that says, I have a right to your tree, or that view, or whatever. It's to say, okay, how harmoniously can we live together and establish some basic ground rules? And so, but the problem with that is, is that if you go back to 1908, it might be that I would have much preferred you didn't get one of these new-fangled, four-wheeled, engine-driven apparatus, because they look kind of commercial to me, where you used to hitch up your horse. The evolution of power and energy in this world has brought us some things that I know you think look industrial. To me, they don't look fundamentally different than some other things that I think we see in a lot of other uses. And I suspect if this trend continues, we're going to look at a house and say, you know what? I look at a house now and say, why do they have shutters? Houses that have shutters, that actually don't work as shutters at all, you know, they're a manifestation of something aesthetic that used to have a practical purpose. We're going to look at a solar panel and go, we don't even see it. It's part of the economics or the evolution of the energy thing. So I think it really comes down to, when we get into issues of, you know, setbacks and things like that, I think there's a value, and I've sort of tried to soften up a little bit over this, in this keeping the peace, community working together, but when someone says, I have a cost-effective way to power my house, and an ecologically beneficial way to power my house, and someone says, I don't like the look at it, of it, then I think we get into the danger of saying, you know what, I hope the guy across the street doesn't want a purple car, because that really rubs me the wrong way. No offense to any Ravens fans, so...
If I could, too, I just want to make one correction. Zoning is not necessarily to keep the peace, it's an attempt to keep the peace. I want to make sure it's clearly an attempt.
Maybe Commissioner Howard and I agree, and maybe the three of us agree, is, Doug, listen to what I'm going to say, because I think we agree, is, we have, number one, a philosophical inconsistency between zoning districts. We require screening of these devices if they're placed in commercial, but we do not require screening if they're placed in residential. That is a philosophical inconsistency. Number two, as elected officials, we've got to consider constitutional issues, but we also have to be pragmatic at times and try to not set our citizens up for heartache, for heartache. And we have the ability to get this right and mitigate that right now. So we don't have neighbor going, fighting with neighbor, okay? And we talked about the Board of Realtors not weighing in, well, we don't really, we haven't really enabled this until now. We're granting a set of rights that didn't currently exist. It wasn't regulated before, and it really didn't exist until government grants came along, let's put it that way. And we should, if we have an opportunity to enable this, which I don't have a problem enabling it, Doug, I'm okay with that, I just want to see it done in a way that reduces the likelihood we're going to turn neighbor against neighbor, because these devices, which arguably from the rear have, may have infrastructure, it looks very similar to a billboard, it's going to create conflict, and we have a chance to get it right, by working on the setbacks and/or screening issues.
I have to say, I've been pushiness for however long I've been a county commissioner, and even when I was running for this. I haven't heard any negative feedback at all about it. When I go out in the community, and I go out all the time and talk to people, and if we talk about solar, no one says, oh, you know what, I don't like that because, I've never heard that. I have heard, can we get more solar? Is there a way to get more solar on a property, on a land and so forth? So I think that this is a great compromise between the people that may not like the solar, because now we're limited to different sizes on different sized lots. But I also have to agree, which I didn't think about, because my lot's not that large, that if you have something over 10 acres, you can have even more, because you would need it as long as it's used just for your, the powering of whatever you're doing on your particular piece of property. I don't see a problem with that either, and if we could put a variance in, which you guys have to come up with, you know, like something of that sort, I think that would be, would be fantastic.
Yeah, I think the only thing we got to be careful about is, I mean, if we're really doing it for aesthetic reasons, and to the lady's testimony, you know, if you can't see it, then really, what's our rationale for restricting it at all? Now, I mean, I think there are other possible reasons why that needs to be considered, but we got to also make, you know, this is why I get really uncomfortable with some of these decisions being made aesthetically. To your other point about, you know, Commissioner Rothschild, about commercial versus residential and all that, I do think fundamentally, and I think we have some room for opportunity here, we have got to look at how we, the requirements we put on things when two different types of zoning come together. We're dealing with that in the Freedom Plan right now. I think anytime you have commercial back up to residential, residential back up to industrial, anytime those two things come together, you always have, I think, a little bit more of a challenge, because the nature of what's going on around you changes. Unfortunately, though, because, you know, all the land in Carroll County is contiguous, there is no such thing as, you know, sort of an island zone, so every zone is going sooner or later bump into a zone that's different, and so someone along that line is going to say, I'm looking at something that doesn't, you know, I look out to my east and it doesn't look as nice as what I see to the west, and that's just the nature of it. So I do think there's opportunities there, but within a zone, to say, well, you know, within the residential zone, we're going to further create, you know, more boundaries between what can go on, between, I think we have the ability to deal with setbacks. The one thing I would be just very careful about with the idea of the variances, one way we also create the opportunity for neighbor to be against neighbor, is to have any measure of arbitrariness in the regulations, because now it says, well, I know there's got to be a hearing, so now I'm going to go argue, and sometimes we're arguing things, you know, if everybody that ever came to one of our public hearings and told us that what was going to happen was going to cause the end of the world, I don't know how many times the world would have ended already, but the vast majority of those things go forward and the world doesn't end. So I just think we got to be careful about saying, you know what, I'd rather say, listen, if we can't see it, if there's got to be a maximum, if there's a formula, if the math's that simple, even if we can't do it this go-around, you know, let's get that right. But what I don't want to see is, you know, creating another avenue of subjectivity that then creates, you know, and it creates cost and burden on our folks as well. So I think that's something we should...
I just want to say, for the EAC, they've done a great job of making this very simple for zoning administrator to interpret. And I know it's all, it should be for residential, not commercial here, is what we're talking about. And I do commend them in putting this together, planning and zoning, bought into it unanimously that, yes, you did a great job of putting this together. I do like the idea, though, for variance for larger parcels, and we maybe need to look at that separately above 10 acres, we, you know, there is some flexibility there if you, in that agricultural is already, has their, when I'm touching that, that's already set up. So what we have to do, I think, is make a step forward on this for residential, then we come back and start, and maybe even part of this to maybe come up with a variance language for the larger than 10 acre parcel, or whatever size you agree on.
I want to, I want to respond, thank you, Commissioner Weaver, I want to respond to something Commissioner Frazier said, and Commissioner Howard alluded to it, and one of the axioms of government is that you don't usually hear from people until after it affects them personally. And I want to give an example of how, where we had a chance to get things right, we didn't, and it's caused nothing but gnashing of the teeth in places across the county. A perfect example, Phil, Linda, pay attention, because we need to fix this, is shared driveways or shared private roads where we give, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, gives a variance or conditional use, excuse me, a conditional use to one of the houses to operate a business. And what happens is, under the code, they're allowed to operate the business, but then it dramatically increases the traffic on the shared driveway or the private road, resulting it in decaying much faster. Then it decays faster, since the BZA does not adjudicate any shift in maintenance expenses, then other neighbors are put in a position where their road is getting worn out by truck traffic, but they have to absorb the cost of repairing it, because the BZA never imposed a proper remedy among the neighbors of the shared road in order to avoid turning neighbor against neighbor. I'm aware of multiple situations, Ken, and I got one or two where brother is fighting brother. In fact, one of them ended up backing their truck in a fight over the shared road, because we didn't deal with the maintenance issue to make good, keep good neighbors happy, backed their truck up into another neighbor, got himself arrested, was actually, well, I'll leave it at that. The point is, if we do a really good job of refining this, gentlemen, I'm not trying to stop, because I don't have the votes to do that, but if we do a better job of refining the boundaries of this, we can reduce the likelihood that we will turn neighbor against neighbor and brother against brother. I'm not saying you shouldn't go for, I know you're going to go forward with it without me, but you have, we have one more chance now to address the concerns of larger lot owners like Ms. Norris, and do a little bit better job on the smaller lot owners of protecting them in a way which is consistent with what we already do in commercial districts. And I think we should take this opportunity to tweak this thing, let's get it right, and hopefully all five of us can vote for it, and we reduce the likelihood that we will create unhappiness within our communities.
President, I make a motion to close the hearing, leave the record open for 10 days.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion and second to close the hearing for 10 days. Any other comments on that? All in favor?
Aye. No.
Okay, we'll bring it back in 10 days or probably more than that.
Okay, wait a minute.
Right now, we tentatively have on your calendar October 27th for deliberations.
Right.
Based on today. So if you want to give us any direction to come back to you, we can, or if you want to continue your conversation, I mean, that's obviously...
Well, I think based on what we've heard today, we need, we need to give you a little bit of direction to come back with us with some of these ideas that we've talked about. I don't think there's a need to go into more discussion on it, because we're sort of kind of fading off topic now with some of the stuff.
Well, wait a minute, we're talking about significant amendments to this, Tim. This is now the chance to get it right before going, before closing the public hearing. I mean, if we're going to amend this, and I hope we will, is procedurally, what's the most efficient way to accomplish this for my colleagues? What's the fastest and most efficient way to accomplish, if we want to make certain amendments? Because I think these are significant amendments.
Well, what did you have in mind?
Well, I would think there's two issues at hand. One is, are we going to, you know, leave it the way it is, or create some sort of a distinction for lots, say, over 10 acres, if that's the right number? And then the second is, whether that ought to be done by virtue of a variance, or that ought to be done by virtue of some actual policy that's specific to what the outcome would be. I think those two things have to be addressed.
Well, procedurally, we'd hate to come back to you and show you language for the first time on the day that you're voting on it, so if your direction is that we prepare a variance procedure and, and what was the other, what was the other one?
Well, just the idea of creating something, you know, are we, first of all, is there, is there a, you know, what's the recommendation of what to do with acre, you know, lots over a certain acreage? And then I think the question is, should it be a variance procedure or a calculation? I mean, I don't think we're asking for the calc, you know, well, I guess, I don't know, if we have a variance procedure in place, it'd be more a matter of what the conditions are, I guess, really, than, more than anything else.
One's going to lead the other, unfortunately.
I'm okay, I'm okay with either one of those. I think avoiding conditional use reduces the likelihood of lengthy expensive processes, which I know is what Commissioner Frazier and Weaver want to avoid. I'm okay with trying to do it with a calculation, but I also ask, unless my fellow commissioners object, that we consider tweaking the setbacks on the smaller, on the smaller lots.
Well, I think if we were going to do that, that would require a different process. I don't have any inclination to want to really do that.
Plus, we have discussed tweaking the setbacks every time this has been brought up, and every time we have said, no. Why would it be any different?
Well, would you like us to come back on the 27th with...
Proposals.
A proposal on the size issue and the variance issue?
The EAC didn't look at that at all, but just...
Brendan, maybe you can address that.
The E...
Work ahead, I'm sorry.
The EAC was instructed to look at this in, for residential. We were very much focused on the small lots. We meet next Wednesday, and basically, I mean, if this is what we're instructed, I don't want to speak for the EAC without talking to everyone, but I feel like we were all in favor of seeing this be something that was successful for people and able to provide the electric that they needed for their personal use. So I believe that if there's some change made to lots, I mean, Commissioner Howard sort of arbitrarily said 10 acres, whatever that is, I believe that we would be in support of that, but we will be meeting next Wednesday, and so if we come back on the 27th, I'll be able to give you the EAC's up or down on that.
Okay, so, first of all, I was not arbitrary. Ms. Norris, use Tim, with all due respect, now that's arbitrary. The, you know, so if you came back to us on the 27th with feedback that you've gotten from the EAC, then, Tim, couldn't we at that time ascertain whether or not whatever course of action we're taking was different enough that it needed a hearing, or not different enough such that we were okay within the purview that we had?
Yes.
I mean, we really can't know until we get a final, a look at it, right? I mean, without, I mean, it's kind of unfair to say to you, well, is it, is it going too far when you don't see where we're going yet? I'm not that being unfair to you is something I'm totally against, but...
Obviously. We will return on 27th with suggestions for a variance process and for a size criteria.
And if we are in a situation where there isn't enough significance to actually require another hearing, can we move fairly quickly on bringing it back to, you know, so that it's not another...
Well, if we got the language beforehand, emailed to us, then we could all see it before then, and we could possibly make a decision on that day.
On that day.
And I just to be clear, I think you want size criteria, size, as well as not just a variance, but whether it should be a variance or some kind of formula, that would be codified, that it should not be as subjective as a variance process.
Yes, that's, yeah, a variance process, which I meant was, you know, to have limits Yes, that's, yeah, a variance process, which I meant was, you know, to have limits or bounds or some type of criteria that you would use to do that process, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate the input, I think that was very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioners all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, EAC, for your work on...
Is there more?
Okay. Good chance for the room to...
Empty.
Empty, yeah. All right, next on our agenda is...
Can we have a quick vote on the motion to close?
Didn't we vote?
We did.
They did.
We have to...
Did you close the record?
It was four to one.
Yeah, it was four to one.
Close the hearing and keep it open for ten days.
Yeah, we did that, four to one.
Yes, Commissioner Rothschild.
Yeah, yep.
Thanks, thank you.
See what happened? You try to be helpful.
Okay, next is a decision based on...
You were told to pay attention to, so there's no excuse for that. There's no excuse at all.
Yes.
Pointed.
Okay, if it's all right, I'll continue. Next is a decision for spring 2016 amendments to the 2014 Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. The procedure by which local water and sewer master plans may be amended is set forth in the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Carroll County, in concert with our municipal partners in this matter, have also refined this process to the point where it is today, where we have two amendment cycles each year. You have before you several amendments to the 2014 Water and Sewer Master Plan. They come to us as part of the spring 2016 amendment cycle. These amendments were reviewed by staff, they were referred to agencies for comment. When appropriate, was referred to Municipal Planning and Zoning Commission for review and approval. All of these amendments were also reviewed and endorsed by the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Two weeks ago, a public hearing was held, there was no testimony at that time. Following the hearing, you voted to close the hearing and keep the record open for ten days, there has been no additional testimony received. The period of time now having expired, it would be appropriate that you take action to approve these amendments, and this would be done by approving an adoption resolution. We have the resolution here before us, and so the motion would be to approve this adoption resolution.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the resolution to adopt the proposed amendments to the 2016 Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Actually, it's 2014.
I'm sorry, 2014. Well, the 2016 amendments to the 2014 Water and Sewer Master Plan.
Correct.
Second.
And just to refresh my memory, the 68.14 acres being added to the priority planning sewer service area of Matt Airy, that is Leisher-Harrison?
No, that is Brittany Manor. Harrison-Leisher was already added with the last amendment cycle.
All right, anything else? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. We have approval and adoption of minutes. Let's take care of those at this time. The first set, actually, it's the only set, 10:00 AM on October the 6th.
One second, hold on before you call the votes. Item 12, the geotechnical study for slope failure. It says, "Once performed a study of a slope failure," have we, did we actually conclude in that hearing that it was a slope failure? Or was it just concerned that there might be a future slope failure? There was stress on the roadway, a crack, but we don't necessarily know for sure that there's a slope failure. I'm concerned about this from a liability perspective. There's an admission against interest to label this a slope failure, and we really don't know. We know the road cracked and it has raised concerns that there might be an eventual slope failure, but we don't really have a slope figure. It's not like if the slope had failed, we would close the road, I think.
I'm not sure that that's, this conveys the specific language that they used. I don't know that they identified it as...
Potential slope failure.
I think, I think they used...
It's a study for determining slope failure.
It says, "To perform a geotechnical study of a slope failure on Old Hanger Road." It treats it as a fait accompli, the way it's currently worded. I don't believe it's a fait accompli, we have. And I think we should say, "Geotechnical study of a slope," or, I don't know, I don't think it's a failure.
It's just the way they said, "Geotechnical study for slope failures," the way it's said in the title, I think that's correct, just to see whether or not there is one.
But the first sentence says, "Perform a geotechnical, of a slope failure." It treats the slope failure as a fait, as if it's already happened, as a fait accompli. I don't think that's correct. I think we should...
What we're paying for a study we shouldn't have done?
Why don't we change "of" to, why don't we change "of" to "for?" So that it reflects what the, what the, what the title says.
For a potential slope failure.
Because that's the way in which it was presented to us.
Or possible, I think possible.
Or possible.
Right, that's fine, you can put possible in there. That's the way that it was conveyed, so let's leave it.
Or possible, whereas it hasn't happened yet. Because if it already failed, we should be closing the road, right?
Right, correct.
All right, so I'm in my, I mean, I'm in my motion to reflect that change.
Second.
A second to read the motion.
Okay. All right, anything else on that set of minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything for open admin? Okay, if not, we have agendas. Week of October the 17th, nothing listed on Monday. Tuesday is the District Five Business Advisory Meeting in Eldersburg, it's Commissioner Howard. 9:00 AM is also planning and zoning, Commissioner Weaver, that's on Tuesday the 18th. Wednesday the 19th, we have the Ark of Carroll County's grand reopening, I suppose, ribbon cutting. There might be a change there now, right, Commissioner Weaver?
Yes. I'm going to Board of Public Works that morning instead of the Ark of Carroll.
Okay, you have that?
Except for a ruralizing program.
Okay. 12:00 PM or noon is St. John Properties Luncheon, Commissioner Howard, that's in Eldersburg. Board of Education closed is at 2:00, and then they have their meeting at 4:00, that's Commissioner Rothschild.
Question, Denise, didn't they make some changes to the Board of Education meetings on the 19th? Would you check the timing? I think they adjusted some times. I don't know if it's reflected here or not. If you check with them, please, for both of those meetings. I think there was an hour shift, but I don't recall for sure.
Okay.
All right, at 4:30, continuing on on the 19th, is drug treatment court graduation. Right now, it's myself and Commissioner Weaver. Community College Board meeting's at 6:00, Commissioner Frazier, and that's the night of Commissioner Howard's town hall meeting at South Carroll Senior Center, and that's at 7:00 PM.
I understand how you could put that the same night as my community college thing, I don't get it. I'm telling you, it took me a long time to find a night I knew you'd be somewhere else.
Thursday, October the 20th, we have closed admin at 8:30, and then we go into open at 10:00. Items to include fund transfers for the REC Council, the bond resolution will be coming up, Johnsville roadside walk project, that's planning. We can come back with a decision on evening transit pilot program, request approval for airport development areas, that's based on a briefing we had last week. Another airport decision on the logo was based on a briefing last week. Some Department of Public Works issues, Culvert over White Rock Road and Lyster Park sediment trap closure, and then we have some GOCAP monies, again, a grant application, or actually we're accepting the award that day for the grant application that was presented on the 12th of May. Then we continue open session, just for everyone's knowledge, we decided that we were gonna do full days on Thursdays now, and on Thursday afternoon, we go back into session at 1:30. We have request approval on opening and warming, the opening of the warming and cooling centers, something that'll be upon us here quickly. We have Department of Housing, Community Development Emergency Solutions, Solutions Grant Award, some more GOCAP money, request approval to go to public hearing on changes to personnel code, and then we have some equipment maintenance agreement issues that we're gonna talk about in reference to the Carroll County Public Network. 4:00 PM that day, we have the Combined Education Committee meeting, is that still the correct date, 20th?
Yes.
That's Commissioners', well...
Well, I'll be there, too.
I was gonna say Weaver and Howard, right?
Well, I'm always attend, too. We have to put it...
I got you, I know, okay. Just didn't have Mr. Howard's name there, that's all. 5:30 PM is the Historical Society Annual Business Reception. Right now, it's myself and Commissioner Howard. And Silver Oak Academy, Silver Oak Academy Community Appreciation Day is at 6:00 PM. Commissioner Frazier will be attending that, Kymar. I'm gonna try to get to that also. You might wanna list me there just for procedural purposes to make sure we, you know, everybody gets flying around the moon. Nothing on Friday the 21st, Saturday the 22nd, Commissioner Weaver is at Pancake Breakfast in Finksburg, and Commissioner Frazier has the WTR report. Anything for that week? Week of October the 24th, from Monday through Wednesday, myself and Commissioner Frazier will be in New York for the credit rating trip. On Tuesday the 25th, Integra-Sparehaven speaking engagement, that's Commissioner Howard, that's at 7:15, is that correct, AM?
Yep.
8:00 AM is the chamber breakfast with Commissioner Howard in Eldersburg, that's Commissioners Howard and Rothschild. And the BMC meeting is that afternoon.
I understand that's been canceled and it will come off.
That gets removed. Nothing additional on Wednesday. Thursday the 27th, BWI partnership breakfast in Lentikum Heights, Commissioner Howard at Closed admin on that day also at 8:30, and we may have to, well, we'll address that because you're probably gonna be challenged to be back here from BWI, so we'll address that, and we may have to scoop that around. We go into open at 10:00 AM, and we'll be sitting as the Board of Health, and we have several topics of discussion there. Fluke campaign in schools, state law on super housing, homeless grant update, and repeal the bat requirements, all very interesting topics. 10:45, well, whenever, the rest of the time, there's only one other item, proposed zoning text amendment for solar surface, and we'll come back with that on the 27th, as discussed earlier.
Well, they won't be ready because they won't, not have met yet.
Yeah, they will. This is the 27th of October.
Oh, it's a week after, it's a week after.
That morning also, we're going to have on the agenda the CEC discussion and also charter home rule discussion.
What is the discussion on CEC, Doug? Can you give us some idea, from what perspective?
Yeah, starting this coming week, or the week before, they're supposed to be brainstorming ideas for each of the three government entities, I guess, and then with representatives of only a couple on each, the ideas, each of those will bring any recommendations that are made or considered back for discussion so we get some feedback as to, yeah, we might consider that, no, we absolutely wouldn't, and then there'll be another CEC meeting and then we'll do that again, basically. It's to make sure that, as we're heading down the path of trying to refine options, it's being done with each, each of the representatives going back to their respective boards to hone this into something that's...
So, we're not hearing any presentations then?
No, 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 it's gonna be, let's say at this next meeting next week, they come up with six things they think we can do, and we come up with 10 we think the school system can do, and three the delegation can. This is our opportunity to discuss those six and say, you know, we might, we won't, we could, we will, whatever.
Yeah, that's good.
It's just to make sure that all five of us are at the table.
That's good, yeah, that's good.
Okay, anything else?
Actually, go back to 11. Actually, I think we need more than 30 minutes. I think, I know those discussions are gonna take more than 30 minutes, I think.
On the CEC?
Yeah, I think we should extend the CEC to at least 45 minutes.
Sure.
Doug, what do you think?
Sure, that's fine. We can limit debate.
We can limit debate, but debate leads to better decisions in most cases.
Okay, anything else there? Are we gonna be, are we gonna be...
You're not gonna be meeting in the afternoon for an afternoon session because of the solar groundbreaking?
Correct.
So, if you run a little bit longer in the morning...
Not a big deal.
Okay.
As long as you provide lines, it's gonna be fine.
All right.
Meet lovers.
2:00 PM is the groundbreaking ceremony for the Solar Array Project, that's at Carroll Community College. All five of us will be in attendance there. And at 5:00 PM that evening is the Small Business Awards Ceremony, myself, Commissioners Frazier and Howard.
Add me to that, I'm gonna try to make it.
Nothing listed on the 28th, 29th, Commissioner Weaver's eating barbecue again at Hampstead, seems to do that a lot.
It shows, too.
On, well, Commissioner Rothschild has the WTR report that week, and there is the Town of Manchester ribbon cutting ceremony for their new town hall offices and police department. That's at 1:00 PM on Sunday the 30th, and myself and Commissioner Weaver are listed as attending that. Anything else on that week? All right, nothing additional for open. We need to go into closed for legal advice.
Motion to close for legal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, and then I'll make a motion to adjourn after that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Carroll County Government now streams live right to your smartphone. Go to carrollcountymd.iqmtwo.com.